We are on time, it's 5:00. So we'll call this meeting regular. Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. There is no -- I asked the clerk to call the order. A roll call, I mean.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. There's no one in the audience at this point in time, and no cards for public comment. Therefore, we are going to turn this over to the attorney for closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There is a closed session item pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and it is existing litigation, and the case name is SEC versus the City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and the case number is set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the commencement of the 7:00 meeting.
Thank you. If there's no questions from the council, we're going to recess to closed session at 5:01. (pause)
Or somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in there in the announcements, maybe after John Billings.
Okay. That would be good. I'll have him first, and, okay.
I'll get to that point.
Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00, and this is the regular council meeting of the City Council for this May 7, 2013. We have been in executive session, and I'll ask the city attorney to speak on our executive session item.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. You had one closed session this evening. It was existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The parties to the litigation, the case numbers, all set forth on the agenda, and there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. We are going to have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation would be Captain Sylvan Young, Salvation Army. Pledge of Allegiance then would be followed by Sam Lucia, our police chief, and so if you would stand or remain standing. Will you bow your heads with me? Lord God, we come this evening with thankful hearts for the privilege we have of living in this wonderful city. Lord, we thank you for the blessings we have had and that you have bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask that you be with us in this meeting, that you guide and direct, that you be with the conversation and discussion. Lord, we thank you and give you all the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one We have a -- is it a proclamation? It is. This is going to be -- Dana Armstrong is going to be accepting. If you would come up, please. Not going to read all of it, but I am going to read portions of it because this is important. It starts out, "Whereas water is California's most precious natural resource and is vital component, is vital component for our economy and environment, and whereas the goal of this Victorville Water Department is to serve its customers by managing water resources effectively and efficiently, thereby ensuring a safe, reliable water supply for residents, businesses today and in the future. And whereas continuing to conserve water is an important part of ensuring a sustainable water supply for today and the future," and believe me, that's important to every one of you, and especially us, so that we can carry out the things that we do, make sure that our parks and our growth continue so that we can have a viable, exciting economy, and I know we can. Now therefore, I present this to the City Council, recognizing the month of May 2013 as Water Awareness Month, and urging all citizens and businesses to continue to promote water awareness and to make the conservation the most precious resource a way of life. And Dana, I present this to you. Do you have a comment?
Yes. Of course, I have a comment.
A woman has comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very happy to be here. This is the, at least the, third year I've been up here, I believe, for Water Awareness Month. And it's -- May is a month designated by many California water agencies as Water Awareness Month. I think the reasoning is, as the weather heats up, today's weather notwithstanding, it's time to remind residents and businesses about the need to conserve water, as Mr. Mayor mentioned previously. It is our most precious resource, and we have to have it to do what we do, to live our daily lives, to have our businesses, to have our homes. We must have water, and conservation is an important part of guaranteeing our future water supply. Just a little fact, Victorville's water comes from the ground. We pump our water out of an aquifer, the Mojave Basin, and we pump more than goes back in from time to time, so it is very important to conserve water. And there's also a state law that requires a 20% per capita reduction by the year 2020. So it's a good idea, and it's also a law that we need to conserve and implement programs. To celebrate Water Awareness Month, our Conservation Division has been very, very busy. We started out in February, we sent a letter to the elementary schools inviting, saying that we would send our folks out to their 5th grade classes, which is the perfect time for their curriculum, to talk about the water cycle and aquifers. We had 12 schools contact us, and so over the last three months, we've been very, very busy. We've hit 58 classrooms and almost 2,000 kids, given presentations about the water cycle as well as aquifers. And then in May, we're going to -- May and heading into the fall, we're going to be sponsoring assemblies about, called H2O, Where Did You Go?, again, with the idea of water conservation in 10 schools, 20 performances, and that's gonna -- those are school-wide assemblies, so that's gonna be about 6,000 to 8,000 students at the elementary school level that will be getting the water conservation message. And one thing I would really like to do today, and she's gonna be mad at me, but I would like to acknowledge Kathy Cochran. She's one of our -- she's our conservation specialist. At least wave, say hi, Kathy. Kathy Cochran and --[593.04][593.04](applause) And our supervisor, our conservation supervisor, Donna McCormick. She wasn't able to be here this evening. But these two ladies, I don't -- I do not know how you were still standing, or you still have a voice after 58 classrooms in that period of time, and I have to say that they too, every 5th grader in the city just about knows them. They get, "I saw you at school, I still have my water cycle bracelet." They are the rock stars of the 5th grade classes in Victorville, and they've just done an absolutely fantastic job, and I thank you very, very much for the work you've put in, Kathy and Donna also. Thank you very much.
If you'd mind, ask the city clerk to present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There are two revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. The first one is on Successor Agency Agenda Item Number 7, the Non-Housing Fund Due Diligence Review. The fiscal impact figure has been revised from $3,308,298 to $1,304,112. The second revision is on City Council Agenda Item Number 9. It is on the dais and relates to the Victor Valley Water District, the rates public hearing. This is also made available to the public, as is the other revision, and those are the only revisions I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the record, when we went into the executive session, there was a roll call. All the council members were present, all the council members are still present, and so we're now going to move on to the section where individuals who have filled out a card or wants to address the city council, please, if you can, at this point, keep your item comments to three minutes or less. And some of you who filled out the card also want to speak on different items, and that's okay. Some want to speak on one item, or some want to speak on multiple items. If those are marked, I keep those, and we'll call on you again when we get to item 15 or 24 or whatever. I'm going to call on the individuals, as I have received them, and so the first individual
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen. I have several things I'd like to speak about. Number one is, I have some pictures. I come in, and I had a meeting with the city manager and the city engineer, and there was a letter that went out to every single one of you that showed I only had one tree that had water in it. I had nine trees, and I don't like to be made a fool of. I feel that they should write a letter to every one of you and let you know that that was not right. I think we need a letter of apology. I really do. I do not feel that was done properly to us at all. And another thing, we have several things going on, and I'm concerned about them. I'd like to really push on some of this stuff. We're getting words that we're going to take and try to cut lights out, you know, streetlights and that kind of stuff. We get a movie on that. People don't know about this unless they're here or on the internet, and not too many people get involved anymore because of what's going on. We've got all these empty stores in this city. Why? Because we have to raise our rates to the BIA and everybody else, and it's not right. We need to hold things down. We do not need to be going on trips, which is happening now. We're going back on trips. We're doing the same thing we've done before, and the people get took. We start raising all of our rates. That pays for their trips and pays for everything else in this city. It's not right. It's not one bit right what's going on, and we need to really start sitting down here. We should get back on our feet first. We should not be hiring seven different positions. We should not be doing all this. We don't have the funds until we build it up. It's gotta be built up, then go ahead and do what you gotta do. But right now, we've been dragging and dragging and dragging, and we're probably gonna have some more problems along the way, as I'm reading in the paper. So please, pay attention to what's going on. Let's get this city going like Apple Valley, Hesperia. They're getting all the new stores. We're gonna get a target someday, if it ever passes. I mean, there's so many things going on that people don't know. People needs to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Evening, council. I got a couple things. There is a shopping cart problem in this town, and it's getting out of hand. It's centralized in a few different areas. Of course, there's some areas where it's, you know, it's not a problem. The Toys R Us store on Amargosa Road, there's a wash that runs behind that shopping center. There's about 100 carts that are ditched in there. Half of them are buried halfway in dirt from the erosion from the dirt. So I ask the council this. If there's a new technology of GPS for shopping carts, if you're going to operate a store or facility that has shopping carts, and your square footage is 20,000 square feet or more, and you're within 300 yards from a store, they need to have a GPS lock system. Because I'm getting tired of picking this stuff up. The store doesn't do it. I understand it's not the store's fault. I understand that. But it is their responsibility, and they do hire people to pick them up, but it doesn't seem to be working. I pick up five, 10 carts a week in my neighborhood. My neighbors are starting not to like me. If you're gonna take a cart home, I tell them, put it in the garage and take it back next time you go to the store. Don't leave it in the street. So I would ask the council to look at the possibility of requiring these big-ticket stores that are close to residential areas to have GPS lock devices on those carts. All right? It's out of hand. I mean, it really makes the city look trashy. It really does. I don't know if you guys agree with me on that, but I'm telling you, it's especially centralized in the southeast corridor of town. Walmart wouldn't -- Walmart won't even be affected because they're not 300 yards or 300 feet from residential areas. So it's gotta be centralized to the supermarkets that are walking distance from the, you know, from the residential areas. Okay?
Okay.
How's that, guys? Otherwise?
Thank you. And we also have you to speak on item 24 later. Is that correct? You did you fill out -- you filled out to speak on item 3 and 24?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That is all I have at this time on the cards. Did I miss anyone? The individuals who are going to speak on different items later.
You have to fill out a card in order to speak?
We ask you to for a lot of reasons, but if you want, now's the time to come to the microphone, if you want to speak. Mr. Miller's coming up now. If you want to follow him, you may do so.
I don't want to say my wife forgot something, but I do want to bring something up, is that last week, we had a whole U-Haul truck full of furniture drop by our corner on Topaz, and we, excuse me, we called the sheriff, and we called code enforcement, and I'd say it took about three days for code enforcement to get out there and pick all of that up for us. I just want to compliment them for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Earl Jones. I've been trying to get tumbleweed cleaned up behind my fence, behind my house, for over a year, and it's really ridiculous. It's a ton of tumbleweed that is a fire hazard. I called the fire department. At first, I called the Public Works, and they told me it was the fire department's responsibility. I called the fire department, and it's been over a year, and no one has done anything. And it's a real fire hazard. I'm not talking about one or two tumbleweeds. I'm talking about tons of tumbleweed behind my house, on all the houses, on Dandelion Way. And I want somebody to take care of it as soon as possible. Before it causes a real serious problem. If that tumbleweed caused fire, and we had a high wind, we would have a serious problem up here in Victorville. And one other thing I want to speak on is the Martin Luther King Memorial. I read in the paper yesterday that now they want to put a plaque up at some park or something. I personally want a street named after Martin Luther King. La Mesa would be a good street to name after Martin Luther King. I don't want to hear this thing about money, this, that, and the other. All these other cities have done it. I don't see why we can't do it. Between 395, Highway 395, and Interstate 15 on La Mesa, there's maybe 23 houses and one business. And someone, I read that someone was saying that it would cost too much money to, for people to change addresses and all this different stuff. But I think we should honor Martin Luther King with a street named after him. No, I will not accept any other overpass or a plaque at a park. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could, Mr. Jones, either call tomorrow and leave your phone number and address. You indicated there is an imminent fire hazard. We take those, we take all comments seriously for people, but especially those, or either fill out a card before you leave so we can contact you later. We appreciate that. And have I covered everyone? I believe so. At this time, I would like to have our police chief, Sam Lucia, to come forward.
My name's Sam Lucia. I'm the police chief for the City of Victorville Police Department. Good evening, Mayor Cox, and members of the council. It is my privilege and honor to introduce to you tonight the newest addition to the Victorville Police Department, our executive officer, John Billings. John comes to us as no stranger to the Victorville City Police Station. He served here as a sergeant as recent as a year ago, and I think that his time spent here was at least a couple of years, so he's familiar with the city. Another thing I'd like to brag about is that he is a lifelong resident of the Victorville area. His family raised five children. They moved here in 1978. John was just five years old. His dad owned and operated several businesses here in the valley, so he, like me, takes a personal stake in the success of this community, and I just wanted to introduce him to you tonight. John?
Comments, John?
Just glad to be here, back in Victorville, back at home, working with Captain Lucia. I'm looking forward to addressing some of the quality of life issues here in Victorville and just working close with the captain, so thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Doug Robertson, city manager. Do you have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will reserve my opportunity to have a couple more comments at the end of the meeting, but I did want to announce while we still have a full crowd that we've got a series of budget workshops. For the first time, I think, in our city's history, we're actually taking our budget on the road to explain how the city's budget works in good times, bad times, and then using these little blocks that are in front of me, engaging the public and input into the cuts that we've made and how we are gonna grow out of this recession. We've done this with a couple of different groups so far, and it's been very well received. The groups enjoyed it, called it informative, educational, fun. We've come up with a way to make budgeting fun, so I know, it's tough. Tough to believe, but next week, starting next week, on Wednesday and Thursday nights, the 14th and 15th is our first two of these presentations. You only need to come to one, unless you're having so much fun, you want to come back and do it again. But the first one is at Green Tree Clubhouse, the second one on the 15th is at Sunset Ridge Park, and then the week after that, the 22nd through the 25th, it's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday evening, and then Saturday afternoon, they're at various schools in other areas of the city. We did a press release. We believe the Daily Press is gonna do a story on it, and then we're also gonna run a couple of ads. If you are curious about where it's gonna be in your neighborhood, I'd encourage you to call City Hall, and we can get you that information. Love to have you come out. It's geared toward Victorville residents, although if you are a business owner or a nonprofit, we'd love to have your input as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Doug. And this is, by the way, this will be an excellent opportunity for those individuals who have a real interest, and I know most of you do, on how we expend the funds, also how we get funds, how it works, and a lot better understanding of what our jobs here are, and Doug's job. But you'll find it, I think, to be worthwhile. Please, please count on attending these. It'll be good. Now we move forward to the Library Board of Trustees. Item number four, Consent Calendar, Request to Accept Staff Reports February and March
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias, may I get a vote? Motion carries unanimously.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there are no items at the time of posting. Next is the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Written Communications, Request to Accept Notice of Completion for SCLA Building 728, Install Generator and Remove Damage UPS Systems Project. By the way, staff, is this UPS as we know it, or is this some acronym for something else?
It's an acronym for something else. It's a backup storage, battery storage. Technically, it's uninterruptible power supply.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes. Not United Parcel Service.
Sorry about that, but I've asked before for who, why, when, where, what, and how. And while we may understand some of it, often we don't understand all of it, but people are reading the agenda, are calling me, asking me what it stands for, and I can't tell them all the time. So it would be helpful if you would provide a little more than the acronym sometimes, staff. Thank you very much. I would appreciate that.
You'll note in item six, the next item, we got it right.
You did.
But we're not on that item yet.
Okay. Item five, Request to Accept Notice of Completion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number six, under SLC, under the Logistics Airport Authority, Request to Approve Amendment One to the General Service Provider Agreement.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wanted to bring to the attention, this item is actually a fairly important item as it deals with recommissioning what's called our omnidirectional radio frequency system, and it's a part of our overall ILS system, which stands for Instrument Landing System. And your north-south runway, runway 17, is your ILS-rated runway, and it actually has a localizer which helps airplanes establish horizontal relationship with the runway, and then you've got glide slope, which gives vertical relationships to the airplane. This item particularly deals with establishing deals with, um, establishing an aerial, uh, arc. It's not something that you see, but it's actually a radio frequency arc that helps guide aircraft into the runway system. Uh, and particularly in this case, we believe that, uh, by recommissioning the VOR, getting it up and running, um, and, and operating properly, it'll actually help eliminate some of the noise complaints we get out of the Hellendale Silverlegs area. So, what we've done, uh, resulting from the direction given to us by the FAA was to recommission this, uh, very old system. Uh, we have to actually shop and look at a lot of other airports that, uh, have similarly natured old system that are surplusing out the equipment. Uh, but this actually amends an existing contract we have with the, uh, ILS service provider, uh, expanding the scope, uh, and making some necessary physical improvements to the VOR system, uh, to get it up and running.
Thank you, Keith.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven, request to approve, this is under the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Item seven, request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $3,308,298 to the San Bernardino County Auditor Controller. Um, I actually read this a couple of times and then asked Doug to come in and, and, um, explain it to me because it seemed to me that this is badly needed money that rightfully belonged to, um, the redevelopment agency, but I'm wrong, I guess.
Ms...
Didn't they give us back $2 million for that 3.8?
Uh, yes and no. I wouldn't say they gave it to us. We, we had to work pretty hard for it.
We spent it before the redevelopment agency was ever dissolved and they're acting as though it's money on hand that we should return to them. Is this the quality of the work that the Department of Finance in California does generally?
Based on the nearly 100 lawsuits filed on these issues, I would say yes. That's an accurate statement.
But they didn't, they didn't give up on the 1.3 million.
Mr. Metzger?
Uh, that, that is correct. In, in this item, I, I probably want to at least, uh, at least recognize that this is largely due to the, the work and effort by, uh, Ms. Escobar, who's your Economic Development Administrator. She was actually the one that had to, uh, testify on the, uh, successor agency slash city's behalf in Sacramento to argue that they had miscalculated, uh, what they believed were surplus funds that needed to be transferred as a function of the SCLA dissolution process. So, you're correct. Originally, there was a, a belief by Sacramento that $3.3 million was owed to them, uh, largely because they didn't understand the nest, uh, the, how capital assets were booked and they were actually seeing physical capital assets such as roads, curbs, gutters, thinking that that was actual cash and, and it turned out obviously that it wasn't. Um, so, with, with her assistance, we were able to help communicate a little bit better to them, um, you know, what the actual cash balances were. And, uh, in fact, we did get the notice on May 4th, so, um, uh, shortly after this was, uh, staff report was, uh, drafted. We got notice from the Finance Department actually advising that the amount owed is lesser and it's the 1.304, uh, an amount that we believe, uh, there are actual funds to, to cover that obligation request.
And I'm sure the council happily saw the revision for item number seven, reducing the amount from 3,308,298 to 1,304,112 dollars. So... Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias.
Under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items to be presented to the council at the time.
Excuse me, Councilmember Kennedy. Thank you.
I was thinking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously.
Mean to get ahead of you. Under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items to, to come before the council at the time of posting. We are now going to handle the Victorville Water District items. And item number eight is a continued public hearing. Um, the companion item is under the City Council Agenda Item 14. We held the public hearing. We continued, uh, that public hearing and, uh, staff, I'm going to ask for a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item, uh, we believed we had answered all the questions at the last meeting. Uh, there was one remaining question that a couple of you had regarding, uh, actual cost comparisons, uh, from the last fiscal year to this fiscal year. And we added a page that goes through that and as you'll see, there's only, I believe, three differences and it, it really isn't a difference. What it does is it takes the backflow tests, the, uh, annual notice for a backflow certification and fire flow tests and instead of doing them at our cost, uh, because we do these on a fairly regular basis, we've determined what those costs are and the customer will know upfront. So, those, uh, the only difference to the fees would be predefining them as a lot of the other fees are at 65, 16 and $65 respectively. Uh, staff believes that that answers the remaining questions that you had, uh, but we are, uh, always available should you have more.
Now, question to city clerk or city attorney, since we continued the, uh, item, we also continued the hearing.
Correct.
And so, that is reopened at this point in time. If anyone would like to speak on item number eight. I have no card, seeing no one who wants to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. And now on item number eight and companion item number 14, I'm assuming we can take both of those together?
Correct.
Okay. Then, city council members, questions or comments? No question or comments? Call for motion.
I want to just ask one question because I'm getting confused here. This one that we're voting on, is this one to raise the, the fees of the water or just the, the services that could...
This is the policy.
Yeah, this is more policy related. Uh, it establishes a, a set fee for, for three items that previously were simply done at cost. There's no impact to, to water rates or really to the fees, uh, themselves.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
And that also is an approval for Council Agenda Item Number 14. Item number nine, under Victorville Water District, is also a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against the adoption of Resolution Number VWD-13-002 entitled, "A Resolution of the City of the Victorville Water District Establishing Rates for Water Services" and superseding Resolution Number VWD-12-002, uh, Sections Three and Four. This is for the rates. A public hearing, unless there's comments from staff at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to make a very brief comment. Um, and just so that the public and the council is aware, um, we've had a pretty healthy debate over the last, I'll say month, month and a half internally about whether to recommend the rate increase that was already authorized in 2010, uh, or whether to, as we've done the last two years, uh, recommend a rate pass and not have a rate increase. Um, the, uh, the issue ultimately comes down to a question of replacement of infrastructure. Um, if the council approves the rate increase, um, the, uh, amount of money that would be set aside for future replacement costs for the infrastructure of the Water District would be about 7.5 million dollars. If the council does not approve the rate increase, uh, that amount would be about 5.67 million dollars that would be applied towards that depreciation. Um, there are other, uh, cost changes, cost differences, but ultimately, uh, the net result is the amount that you're going to fund your depreciation. Um, uh, the, uh, staff of the Water District, uh, the Director of Public Works and Water and I have met on this issue a couple of times to understand the, and get comfortable with the depreciation schedule. I can tell you that, uh, after a significant review, I am comfortable that it is presented fairly. Uh, ultimately, um, we don't have a, a complete consensus, uh, amongst the staff as to whether or not, uh, the rate increase is absolutely necessary at this time, given the economic considerations. Therefore, there are two recommendations before you. One, uh, A, is that you can conduct the public hearing and approve the rate increase and B, being as an alternative, uh, mending it and defer the effective date. Uh, so, we are essentially leaving it to the council to decide how much of, of the incoming rates you wish to put, put towards, uh, depreciation at this time.
Thank you. Uh, want to have the public hearing first? At this time, I, I had opened the public hearing and I'm sorry, I didn't ask for staff comments. I should have. Um, we have one card, but this is a public hearing. Anyone can speak. I have, the card is from Dorothy Miller.
Oh, mayor and councilmen and women, I'm sorry. Better start saying members, huh? Okay. Um, the problem I have, I can't see raising rates right now. We have not gotten completely out of the mess we're in. We're still trying to get some money ahead, which we're not when people are traveling and everything else, as I said before. Uh, this is not getting money ahead so that we can afford to do things. Now, I was told that we got this money back from the waste treatment plant out at the airbase, but you know what? Then I was told, it's all gone. It's already all spent. Now, uh, what's going on? I don't believe that people are being told the truth. I talked to several people about different things that has gone on with the Water District and I'm not very happy, not very happy at all. And, uh, I think that we need to leave the rate as is at this time. Later on down the road, when we start, stop traveling and we start saving some money, then, hey, raise the rates. But we don't have the money to do that at this time. And you guys just think that money is just, you just raise it, we get more money, the people pay. And that's not the way it works. It should work that you guys should cut back on your traveling, cut back on your hiring, cut back on everything. We've run how long now without hiring a bunch of people? Now, all of a sudden, we're going to start hiring people and here we are. We're going to be back in the same boat we were in before if we don't start watching what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Anyone else like to address the council on this item? Robert Harriman?
Uh, actually, council, uh, I'm not for big increases, but I think it is responsible so we don't have a large increase when the time comes. We've all heard how, uh, the Baldi Mesa Water District in Adelano have put increases off and then they have some kind of a catastrophic increase and then everybody flips out about it. Okay? So, I'm not for major, you know, uh, extreme increases, but I do think it's responsible to keep them in line so people aren't hit with a tidal wave. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers. I'm going to, um, close the hearing. I think it's an interesting question that's been raised in the public forum, Mr. City Manager, in regard to what happened to the treatment plant at the base.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, when the, um, settlement for the Foxborough lawsuit came in, um, I want to say maybe six to eight weeks ago, there was an item on your agenda that, uh, repaid the loan from the Victorville Municipal Utility Services to the Water District and then in turn repaid a loan from the Water District to the Airport Authority. Um, ultimately, the Water District is the beneficiary of the treatment plant, uh, and will be the beneficiary of the revenues from the treatment plant. And over time, as capital fees come in, those will go to the Water District to replenish the water capital account.
So, does the general fund or any other account owe the Water District now for the amount of money that it took to build that plant at the base?
No, it does not.
So, it's been transferred to the Water District free and clear and there's no debt?
Uh, there is no debt except internally within the Water District.
Okay. Um, comments from the council members?
Regarding our option with respect to, uh, option two, defer to when?
Uh, it would be deferred for, uh, 12 months. Um, we, it's, it's based on the budget and it would be a, a rate increase that would be effective, uh, at this point, uh, in July of this year and you would defer it to 12 months. And once again, it would be, uh, something that would be considered, uh, around this time next year, uh, with, uh, potentially with similar options, depending on what the revenues and expenditures look like for the, for the district at that time.
Okay, so, to be clear, uh, staff has made two recommendations, but it seems to me that there's an essence, a third one out there. If we just vote no on it, on this, that it would go away? Is that...
Um, that's not, uh, an option that we've presented and I'd have to defer to the city attorney to find out if, if the council could at this time vote to essentially eliminate the original action of the council back in 2010, uh, to consider it, I suppose, on its own schedule?
I believe you'd have the authority to do that since that was originally done. Uh, the problem is that you spent a lot of time and energy going through the necessary rate studies to justify, uh, you did a rate study back then that justified these annual increases. So, you'd have to reinvent the wheel if you ever wanted to go through this process again. You've done a lot of legwork already. You've gone through the Prop 218 process to establish, uh, a, a increasing rate system based on the needs and the studies done back three years ago. Uh, but certainly you'd have the discretion to change all of that at this point. You'd be, you know, ruining, or not ruining, but you'd be, uh, I want to say wasting. You've spent a lot of time and energy to get this thing in place in the first place and have automatic, or not automatic, but annual increases.
And, and I understand that, but don't we, don't we run the risk of it not being pertinent anymore next year? I mean, all these studies that have been done are going to be three years old, if not older than that, by the time we get to next year's budget.
The rate studies, I understand, it contemplated five years and it was a five-year study and contemplated growth of a five years. So, I believe it's still very valid and supportable and the Prop 218 process was put in place.
All right. That's all the questions I have.
Other questions from council members?
Yeah.
Councilman Kennedy?
I was looking at the operating income analysis, which is several pages into the, uh, document and comparing revenues and expenses over the last, what, four years from '09 through '13. Water District revenues have stayed fairly flat, hovering around $24 million. And, uh, that's our estimate, a little more than that, our estimate for 2013. Expenses, on the other hand, went through a drop from 2009 down to 11, a low point, and then they've started rising again. So, one of the questions that my personal bias makes me ask is my personal bias thinks most government problems are not revenue problems, they're spending problems. So, I, I've, um, asked that we get a little bit more detail on the, the spending and I spent some time with Sean McGlade today and he gave me a, um, and I've given it to all the council members and it's available for the public, I think, a little more detailed analysis of expenditures. And there are some things that are up and some things that are down. Uh, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to address that were obvious differences over this timeframe. In '09, our customer service, uh, cost was about a million eight. It dropped all the way to a million one in 2011, went back up to a million six in '12 and now it's up to 2.2 million. Now, this issue has a long history. Sean, are you, you, you might as well come on up here because you, you can't dodge these questions. Customer service is an issue when the, when the city took over the Water District. We had nine or 10, 12, I don't remember. Larry, do you remember how many we had in customer service? And city believed they could do it with half that and so they cut it back and we've had customer service problems ever since. But as, my, my understanding, Sean, is that this is not necessarily a specific set of people. This is the allocated cost of customer service from the Finance Department. Is that right?
That's, uh, true for a portion of that particular budget. The other thing that, uh, after we had talked, um, did a little bit more research and there's, um, um, bad debt is, uh, if you like, booked into that as well. And to give you an example, back in '09, there was, uh, 95,000 in bad debts. In 2010, that was 546,000, which is, um, you know, it's a huge number. And so, the, that is primarily the cause for the fluctuations that you see in that line item.
Yeah. How do we account for that? I mean, it, do we need to be spending that much on customer service?
Well, I think the other, um, item that comes into it, if you look into the more recent, uh, increases, that's the transition over to the new, um... increases, that's the transition over to the new billing system to software that the, the city has purchased to be able to do that. And transitioning from the old one to the new one caused substantial problems at customer service, and we ended up having to hire more people on a part-time basis. And what's projected going forth in the budget is to hold a number not quite as high as we estimate for this year, but certainly, we believe that there is a need to reserve funds to be able to, to hold on to some of that additional help for, you know, another period of time.
I hate to wrap, I hate to wrap, but I have a question. I understood, what was the delinquency or uncollectible? So, again, went from 95 to 500 and some thousand?
Correct.
Don't we have a policy in place that if people don't pay, that the ultimate owner of that property must pay?
I'm not sure if we do or not. This is back, you know, before I became responsible for the water department, so I'm not quite sure on that.
I believe that is the policy, and if that is the policy, then the uncollectible should have substantially dropped, because if people move, it becomes a lien on the property, or if it's renters, it becomes a homeowner's responsibility. In either case, it may, it may become a delinquent debt, but it doesn't become a bad debt. Or am I wrong?
Again, I can't seek, speak for the previous--
Sean, would Steve, would Steve Borman, would it be easier for him to answer some of these?
Yeah, he may know the, the policy from before.
Yeah.
And specifically, Steve, if you could give us the date of the implementation of that policy. I think it was after 2010, which is the number that Sean was referring to. And then we are still in transition with that policy. Obviously, any new accounts fall into that policy. The, the historical accounts, I think, were still in transition, and Steve can answer that, too.
Steve Borman?
One of the large problems that we had was in transitioning basically from the legacy water district systems over to the PeopleSoft systems at the city. Since then, we've moved over to Munis, but in that earlier transition, as we went to billing, there were so many problems with billing that we had to stop billing our customers for almost six months, and then all of a sudden, start billing them again. And in the, in the meantime, we had a lot of customers that moved out or that were no longer responsible, and we found a lot of that old, those old receivables that became uncollectible. And the $500,000 that you see there actually was only about a fourth of what we experienced, which was in, back in 2008. There was another huge write-off that isn't in this, but that's the problems that we had. It isn't in enforcing the policy. The policies have not been changed. It was that our billing systems were so screwed up, I don't know how to say it, that we lost a lot of revenue. It cost us $2 million overall.
In your opinion, has that been corrected with the new Munis system?
This has been corrected now, and our systems are moving forward, but that's, that's why, at the time, we said to invest a 1.8 million in a new billing system and the Munis system and everything, we'd be ahead, because we lost $2 million just out of revenues out of that experience, and we didn't want to repeat that or, or perpetuate it. So, that's the kind of problems that we have. Those were historical. They have been, you know--
The other, the other thing that was, that was apparent to me was the HDPP expense. In '13, the estimate is about a half million dollars higher than the 2012 actual, and that was almost a half million dollars higher than the 2011 actual. Now, HDPP is a pass-through. There's no net cost to the city. We pay for the water they, they use, and then we bill them, and they pay it. And it's, and it's in the consumption revenue number, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, to get a better picture of revenue, if you pull that, that HDPP revenue piece apart and the expense apart, what we've really got, whereas the, the revenues look like they're fairly steady, it, it would say to me that this year of 2013, there was a, a true drop of a half a million dollars in other water sales. City, why?
That's correct. That is correct. And part of that has to do with construction water. When all of a sudden, the market went flat, we were selling $2 million worth of water to construction companies to, to water the construction sites and everything. That stopped. And so, those revenues just went away. And, but, to an extent, they were, I don't know, recovered through the HDPP. So, there, within the, the revenue accounts, there is fluctuation, even though in total, it seems to be fairly steady.
Reason I'm trying to get at these questions is that, regardless, my personal opinion is water should not be cheap. That I've held that opinion for years and years. But never mind that, because the state law says, "We may only charge what it costs us to deliver this commodity." Period. That's the rule we live by.
And not only that, but we have to. We can't, we can't charge less than what it costs us either.
Yeah. And the depreciation number that we're looking here is essentially the cost, the wearing out, if you will, of existing equipment. And to the extent that we do not cover that and fund it, there is the risk that we will get to the replacement point. We won't have the, the reserves, the funded depreciation to cover those replacements.
That's correct. It's the annualized cost of capital, basically.
That's a simplified kind of idea of the risk. So, the, the question before us is, what is the, what is the reasonable cost of operation that we can expect is meaningful? Is 2013 a good picture? Is 2009, '09 a good picture? Apparently, '11 is not. I mean--
Yeah, and, and, and the best we can do right now is really looking to 2013, the estimate there, but also 2014, as we have some other significant issues that are changing, like taking our cued water and trying to reduce our, our reliance on replacement water. Really, replacement water and our pumping costs are the things that are most susceptible to inflation. Both of those are based on electrical rates.
We have, we have two obligations. Let's, let's try to make this as simple and clear as we can for those who, including me, who are not as up on water issues as we should be. We've got two obligations basically to MWA, replacement water and makeup water. Okay? The makeup obligation, as I recall, is whenever we produce in excess of our allowance--
Yes.
We come, we overproduce water, we owe, we have to buy that. We have to pay for that. We give that money to MWA, they use that--
That's replacement.
--to buy more water.
That's the replacement.
What is the--
That's the replacement.
That's the replacement of it. What's the makeup obligation?
We, we had this discussion earlier--
Many times, yeah.
There, there is a requirement under the adjudication that a certain amount of water passed through the lower narrows, 15,000 acre feet per year. And in dry years, and we've had a few dry years, if that measurement drops below 15,000 at the gauge at the lower narrows, then the producers in the basin are required to make that up.
So, that's, that's making things right with Barstow, Newbury Springs, and so on?
Pursuant to the adjudication--
That's all the producers in this upper basin?
Correct.
So, those two obligations. Now, the, the one that's interesting, the, well, they're all interesting, I guess, but the, the replacement obligation, the way we fund that today is we wait until the, the replacement amount's been determined, and after the fact, we write the check to MWA.
It's like a year and arrears, once the calculations are done.
Now, we're, now we're gonna launch into R-Cube, which I will be happy to talk about in my later, when I get a chance to make some comments. Wonderful program. When we were at the water district, it was on the drawing boards. Today, it's built. It exists.
We're about two weeks away--
It's a sustainable supply force.
We're about two weeks away from actually flowing water into our--
But when we pay for that, we pay for it when?
It's in the cost of the water.
Today.
Yeah.
As we take the water.
Like a monthly billing, yeah.
We're gonna accelerate that cost, and we're gonna have a year. We end up with two years of that makeup cost.
That's correct.
And that's coming 2013, 2014?
It should be in September. September is the end of the--
Well, it's coming in this budget, isn't it, that we'll adopt in July for '13, '14 fiscal year?
Yep. So, you're right, there is an overlap that creates an additional cost. $1.6 million is what we're estimating. Even, even without that, as, if we take that out as an ongoing cost, though, we still are short in covering all of our expenses by about, roughly, we're at a break even with the rate change.
So, one of our questions is, should our customers today pay for that decision that we've made to accelerate that cost? Or should that be somehow covered with reserves and made up on a, in a slower timeframe? And of course, the other question that you have to ask is, one of the biggest reasons water sales have leveled off, one of them, of course, is the economy and what's happened. We just aren't putting in new meters. But the other one is conservation. Conservation's been a significant, had a significant effect in this valley over the last five or six years. So, now what we're gonna do is, we're gonna say to customers, "Because you're conserving water, we're gonna charge you more."
To cover, to the degree that, that there's fixed costs--
Unfortunately, it's a--
You're right.
It's a true statement.
Yes.
Any further questions from the council to the staff?
I have a, a question. Going back to Mayor Cox's point regarding the delinquent accounts, you stated that you had a $2 million loss when you switched over systems and you stopped billing, and the people left, and, and, but the dwellings are still there, so are there liens in effect? I mean, were there collections being done?
Yeah, we submitted to, I don't know, I don't know how much of that we submitted to, to our collection agency and stuff, but for the most part, it was--
What about the liens? How much in liens does the city have?
Well, the thing is, you can only lien if it's, if it's to the property owner. And, and a lot of these were to tenants, were accounts to tenants. Now, we, we make it so that property owners are responsible for their tenant accounts, but we didn't back then.
That's yeah.
There, there you go. That's, that is the change. That's where we, we now allow property owners to assign the account, but they're still responsible to make sure that the tenant pays it. If they don't, then we can lien it. You're absolutely right. I mean, that, that's the catch.
Okay.
I have to have a very unhappy constituent who sent me two or three emails this last week, and she'll be nameless, because she's an employee of a friend of mine. But she's very mad, and I won't tell you what she thinks of that system, because her parents, who sold their home to their children, or grandchildren, rather, they had to reestablish an account, start all over again, and, and nobody knew that all of this, that the, that the tenant was not responsible, but in fact, the property owner was responsible. So, it was-- Our communication on that topic, by the way, has not been probably as clear as it could have been to all our rate payers.
Yeah, all of those conditions are on the acknowledgement and the assignment of the account, but whether or not people read the back of that agreement--
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's--
You know--
There are surprises.
I struggle with, with this item because, you know, the times are so difficult with the unemployment rate, and seniors that just can't afford it, you know, and can't afford the rate increase. And then on the other side, I, I, you know, being in the water industry, I understand that, you know, if we don't have it, and then, like, at BBWA, we didn't have a rate increase for 14 years. And when we did have to do one, it was, it was significant. And so, you know, you, you have to say to yourself, I mean, do you want to get hit in the face all at once, or do you want to inch by? But then, on the other side, I wonder if there's something that we can do internally for the next 12 months to reduce costs. And I know that the payroll has been increasing, and, and I'm wondering, is, is there, is there something that we could do? And if we say no for the next 12 months, I would like it to, you know, go back to the drawing board, and, you know, there just has to be some cuts to be made. So, yeah, it's, it's, and us up here representing the, the constituents, we have to, we have to take all of that into consideration and know that the city has, has cut down to the bare bone. But then you don't want to cut, you know, quality of water. You don't want to cut quality of service.
Right.
It's difficult.
And, and you know, we continue to look at those kinds of things, where we can get efficiencies and that kind of thing. Water district employees are now making 7% less than they did when, five years ago.
As, as everyone else in the city is.
I mean, as well as the city employees and, you know, all of those, all those kinds of things that you've already heard about, what's happened to our benefits, what happens to our salaries. We're looking for, continually looking for ways to reduce costs. Ones of the, one of the things that we did, actually, it started at the Victor Valley Water District, is we prepaid for a lot of our water rights. We prepaid for them at those rates that were in $277 per acre foot, and now we're cashing that out where the current rate is $405. But we're about to the end of where we can do that.
Here's the problem I'm having, and I, I think I'm with Councilmember Vias on this one. I, I look at our, our expenses in 2012, we're $25 million, just over. Our estimate for 2013 is $27.5. It was $2.5 million higher now, part of that, and that, and that involves some increase from the HDPP. I realize that. That's probably half a million dollars, but, but I guess until I'm satisfied, we have done everything we can do to, to, to get our cost of operation at the optimum level, not necessarily the lowest, because quality and service are critical. Customer service is critical. Until we know that we're at the optimum point on spending, I, I, I just am not comfortable raising this rate, and I don't, I'm not convinced we're there, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay, the--
One more comment.
One more.
And I, I want to make it clear to, to the residents that water is not something you want to go cheap on. I mean, in this country, we don't die of birth defects, and we don't die of bad water, so we, we're healthy, and we want to keep our water healthy, and clean water is, is not an option. So, I want the staff to understand, don't ever think you're gonna cut back on that. Other things, you know, convince us, that's--
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, did I close the public hearing?
Yes, I believe that you did.
It was just questions to staff. A lot of information has come out, and I'm not sure that I cut the public off too soon. We normally have the public input. We have the questions of staff. If it raised any additional issues that you feel are really important to this conversation, you know, I can consider that. I'd like to move ahead if I could. Are there any other questions from, from council members? Okay. What were those two options again, Mr. City Manager, that you provided to the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have to concur with the council's comments. Rate studies, rate increases, or potential rate increases are never an easy topic. That's why you've been given two options. One, option A, would be to essentially approve the resolution that's before you tonight, which would allow the rate increase to move forward. The net result would be an increase to the capital reserves for replacement of about $7.5 million. Option B would be to amend the resolution and defer the effective dates for 12 months, and that would have the effect of only putting away, it was about five and a half, just over $5.5 million, a difference of $1.87 million. Ultimately, if you do this year after year, as has been expressed by members of the council, you could run into a time that you don't have the money in the bank, in the account, to make a, a significant replacement. That is not likely to happen next year, but if it continues year after year, it will happen. And if you continue to defer rates year after year, you will end up in a situation very much like BBWRA has been in the past, and very much like one of the other public speakers has mentioned, where you are forced to implement a much higher percentage rate increase all at one time. So, with that, I don't think that it's gonna be the end of the water district, regardless of which option you choose. I am thankful that we were able to present it in a manner that didn't pit staff against council or staff against the public, that this is simply a decision that needs to be made.
I, I have one question. There's an assumption that if we choose alternate B, we defer it for one year, but we're getting ready to start budgets. We have a new policy in effect that holds the landowner responsible. We have a new policy in effect that holds the landowner responsible, and we're a couple of weeks away from starting to buy water from the MWA. Wouldn't it be more reasonable to defer this for six months?
That's an option that would be before you, as I understand it. I see the attorney nodding his head in agreement.
You could amend this resolution to defer it for a six-month period.
We will have a lot of those figures that we're discussing. We will have the cost of water, we will have the cost of operation that are defined. We will also have a better handle on our losses as a result of the new policy to collect from the property owner. I don't, I'm not in favor of approving the rate, but I'm not in favor of waiting for 12 months. Seems like that, after our budget is complete, we will have a lot of these figures we're looking for. If that's acceptable, I'd like council to at least consider that.
Can I make that motion? Option B, and make it a six-month deferral? Understanding that one of the possibilities under Option B is that we find cost savings, and we do fully fund depreciation.
Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, public, for being patient while we went through this, but water is extremely important for current people and for our growth, so we consider, we take this very seriously. Agenda item number 10, tracker, where was that? We have, this is under the agenda item number 10, we have a Victorville Water District, award of contract, current construction in the amount of $167,000. Companion item on this is City Council Agenda Number 19. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11, written communication, Victorville Water District, bid proposal, award of contract to the Van Dyk Corporation in the amount of $296,675 for the placement of a 12-inch diameter water main in Seneca Road between Borrego and Carib Street.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia.
Agenda item number 12, under written communication, Victorville Water District, bid proposal in the award of a contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $228,460 for the replacement of a small diameter steel water main south of Palmdale Road at two locations.
Mr. Mayor, can I just point out that these three items are an example of spending a million, $700,000 of depreciation? If we don't have this funded, we can't write these checks.
Absolutely.
Are you trying to change my mind?
No.
No, I'm kidding.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is item number 13, under the consent, Victorville Housing Trust.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 14, which was the companion item to Victorville Water District number eight, that has been taken care of. Number, item 15.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into this item, as I have done in previous years, will do again this year, I will stand on this item. There are members or organizations that have applied for these grants, as well as organizations that are looking to be approved tonight, that I have done business with, or am currently doing business with, in my capacity as an insurance agent, so I'll stand on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse for the same reason. I have one client on this list that is an audit client of my firm.
Do I have a quorum? We do. Is there any questions of staff before I open the public hearing? I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have three cards from three individuals to speak on item 15, but because this is a public hearing, anyone interested in this item may come to the microphone and give their name and speak on this item. I'm going to start with the three cards that I have, in the order that I received them. The first speaker would be Margaret Diaz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First of all, I would like to thank the City of Victorville for funding us another year, and I do know that times are hard, and the money is very little. However, I, you do have before you, so I'm not going to repeat what you're already looking at. This is what we've done so far for the residents of the City of Victorville. But I do want to just compliment you again on one thing, how you do allow your staff to see, to the agencies that do apply. They do come out, and they do check us, they audit us, they come and see what our facilities are, they don't have strangers, you don't have a committee coming out and checking on us. These are people that have been with the city for years and years and years, and they do know what the agencies are all about, and there again, they do, they do come in, and they do a thorough search. So I just want to compliment you guys on your staff that you have working for the CDBG, okay?
This is the item that you just had passed out to the council.
Yes, that's what we've done so far this year for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Margaret Diaz? Greg Barnes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Gregory Barnes, and I'm the administrator for St. John of God Healthcare Services and Samaritan's Helping Hand. I want to take a moment to thank you for your recommendation for the funding, and assure you that 100% of the money that we are allocated will go directly to client services. With the funding, we will be able to help more families in Victorville during their time of need by preventing the disconnection of their vital utilities, such as water, electricity, and gas. On behalf of myself, our board, our organization, and our clients, we appreciate the time and effort that has been taken to review our application, and we look forward to working together to better the lives of the citizens of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Next speaker, Judy Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and staff. I just wanted also to chime in and say thank you so much for everything that your staff does. We've worked closely with them now since our first grant from the City of Victorville in 2006. For those that might need a reminder, Moses House is a resource center for single mothers of young children. It's long-term case management. This year, we're doing something a little different, and I wanted to introduce to you Debbie Lemons of Rose of Sharon Pregnancy Resource Center. We're collaborating with them on this grant, and this will be the first time, a lot of people think that we're in competition, but I can tell you that most of the agencies up here do best by working together. And because we have similar missions, she, her organization works with women when they are pregnant. Many have just learned that they're pregnant. She has a whole program that helps them to acclimate to that, teaches them parenting, offers diapers and other resources. And then we kind of like to say, we start where they leave off, and we work with women who have children under age six, and those women can stay in case management with Moses House until their child is eight, six years old, their youngest child is six. And given the way things are, sometimes they get pregnant again, so they're involved with our program for longer than six years. We're trying to fix that, but that's not easily fixed, as you might guess. We are very excited about this collaboration, and we look forward to seeing how it works out and making things better for everybody up here. So thank you so much also for the recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in regard to the Housing Community Development Annual Action Plan? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter. The action before the council is to conduct the public hearing, receive citizen and agency comments regarding the draft fiscal year 2013-14 Annual Action Plan, and adopt the HCD Grant Review Committee recommendations. Approve and adopt the plan as presented for submittal to Department of Housing and Urban Development, and for authorized city managers to execute all necessary documents for submittal. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, maybe just for the benefit of the audience, and first, probably to recognize the effort of Councilwoman Vias and Garcia for participating on the selection committee. I believe, and I participated with them on that selection committee, we worked very closely with staff, and staff did go through an extensive process to not only set up the application process, but screen the applications and make recommendations simple for us as members of the committee, to then identify how we wanted to recommend these funds in line with the goals and objectives of the actual plan. And the items before you, on page 251, that is a summary of the recommendations of the committee as to how to fund the respective applicants. The unfortunate thing since we've made the recommendations is, due to federal budget cuts, we've been advised by HUD to actually reduce further by 5%. So the recommendations that you have already recognize that, but I did want to call that specifically to your attention. CDBG is awarding an amount of $881,000 for CDBG programs, and that's both for public administration and construction-related projects. Home is a housing program, where we actually partner with the town of Apple Valley through what's called the Apple Valley-Victorville Home Consortium, and there's about $295,000 being made available for that. We've also identified $62,000 of unspent previously allocated funds that get reallocated for the purpose of this year's budget. The funds become available July 1st, so the action you take tonight will actually set in motion, process to start making those funds available July 1st.
Mr. Mattsler, did we have one member of the council, or two, on this committee?
There were two members of the council.
They are?
Councilwoman Vias and Councilwoman Garcia.
And thank both of you for the hard work you put in on this. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? If not, chairs open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern and Councilmember Kennedy abstent.
At this point, staff will ask those two councilmembers who declared the conflict We are at Agenda Item Number 16, Consent Calendar. Any items that the City Council members may want to discuss separately may be pulled off the agenda. If there are no questions, or up to the council, they may approve item 16, A through G, on one motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Mayor Protem, may I get a vote? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 17, this written communication submitted by Adel Moser, Chief Financial Officer, contract amendment, item number one and two, with InfoSend. Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 18, I'm going to read this, because this is an invoice from the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS. Unfunded liability of an active rate plan for safety plan fiscal year 11/12, $452,300, and fiscal year 12/13, $467,698. And this is for the CALPERS Safety Study City of Victorville. Why do we have to pay the lump sums at this point in time? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in fiscal year 08/09, the City of Victorville contracted with San Bernardino County for fire services, and San Bernardino County picked up all of the employees of the city who were in the fire department. The way PERS works is, there are certain funds that are held by PERS, and those are adjusted annually based on their investments. There was an unfunded liability of about $3 million at that time, and apparently, at that time, the finance director was notified of this. Since then, that individual has left employment with the city, and about a year ago, just over a year ago, the Chief Financial Officer, Adel Moser, and I got a bit of a surprise of a bill for $1 million, and we were not expecting it. And we called to find out what was going on, when, that's when we learned about this unfunded liability that we had to cover. After several months of negotiations and discussions, they agreed to change the schedule from a three-year repayment, essentially about $1 million a year, to a 10-year repayment, because that was more palatable based on our budget circumstances. This is actually two of those payments, because we are behind because of those delays. And over the next 10 years, we'll need to make these payments, obviously, if we, excuse me, come into some one-time revenues, we could make an earlier disbursement and avoid some interest charges, but this seemed to be our best option to go forward.
So I'm assuming, then, beginning July 1, with the new budget, there will be an amount of roughly $450,000 that we haven't had in our budgets in the past-
That is correct.
-for this amount.
That is correct.
And for the next eight years.
That is correct, sir.
We have not accrued this liability?
I may have to ask the CFO to come in. Oh, I'm seeing her shaking her head, no. There was some question-
We did not accrue the 900 in prior years? It's all going to hit its expense this year?
All now. Somehow the message didn't get to the manager's office or the city council, or two years ago, this could have been addressed.
Who was the finance officer at that time?
At that time, it was John Sullivan. He left employment with the city, I believe, in 2009.
And he knew about it?
The, CALPERS sent us an email in which he was copied, or it went to him, also went to someone in human resources, who is also no longer with the city at this time.
We don't know what happened.
And they didn't do anything with it?
They may have had plans, but once they left employment with the city, I wasn't aware of it, nor was the chief financial officer who's here today.
When the city decided to give the fire department back to the county?
In essence, we transferred those employees, yeah.
Was there an actuarial done to see what the unfunded liability was at the time?
You know, I was marginally involved. That wasn't the piece that I was involved in, and I don't honestly know the answer to that.
Well, the city doesn't do their own actuarial estimates. That's done by CALPERS, and they just tell us.
Right, right, but I mean, we initiate it. You put in a request.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if there was ever, it sounds to me that when we decided to give back the fire department to the county, that the due diligence wasn't done at that time to find out what all the liability would have been with that. Like, it wasn't taken into account that there would be unfunded liability with the retirement.
Yeah, I can't say if it was or wasn't. Clearly, at this point in time, that information wasn't shared with current staff.
No matter what, we're left here to clean it up, so I-
Yeah, that's the story of my life these days.
That's true. Just one correction. Victorville Fire District was formed years ago as a special district.
Right.
It was never a county district, so it was an agreement between the city to transfer the functions to the county. From the special district, went to the city, and then to the county.
Through a contract.
Through a contract.
Right.
And since it is a contract, it's probably, things are still negotiable, but at this point in time, while we may be able to- point in time, while we may be able to negotiate, if we continue with the contract, and here's an unfunded liability, it may become, it could become a part of the negotiations, it could become a part of the overall payment, they could assume that. We don't know what's going to happen when the city manager begins those negotiations, but clearly, right now, it's a bill that we have to pay, as distasteful as it is.
If we had remained with the fire department as city function, not contracting with the county, over the last four or five years now, our rates would have adjusted to make up for some portion of this unfunded liability. It's because we, those employees have moved on, that that unfunded liability has not been able to be made up over the last few years.
This is, this is a county retirement system liability, isn't it?
It is not.
Oh, it's CALPERS?
This is CALPERS, because these were city employees. They are now county employees, those that remained with the county.
But from the time that they were here, this is our liability.
This is still our liability, yes, yes. And it most likely would have been an adjustment to the employer portion of their rates, so we would have paid this. We would have been paying it over the last three or four years.
We would have been paying.
I have no idea why, having looked at the email, having looked at the agreement, that was apparently a portion of that action, I have no idea why CALPERS had us wait three years to start making a payment. Perhaps it has to do with making sure that they have something correct. I don't know. It was a bit of a shocker when the first bill came in for a million dollars.
I just think, for years, we went with a volunteer fire department.
Yes.
We're a little too big for that now.
All the matters for the city council for an action?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item 19, under Written Communications, award of contract to current construction in the amount of $167,200 for the construction of the sewer improvement and water pressure reducing valve installation project.
This was approved along with companion Water District Item Number 10, Mayor Cox.
That was taken care of, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Item Number 20.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into this item, once again, I need to abstain. Due to the fact that this involves our county supervisor, Robert Lovinggood, and his company, ICR Staffing, which our firm does business with, it would not be appropriate for me to sit up here and hear this item.
I didn't follow all that, but, oh, I see, okay. All right, this is a matter before the city council, this is a resolution. It's self-explanatory in regard that we would be one of the members of the GPA if we all agree to this. It would be an amendment to the joint powers agreement on the appointment of, allowing an amendment to the appointment of the county official. Questions or comments from the city council?
Yes, I have some concerns with this item. First, I'd like to say that ICR Staffing, who is owned by Robert Lovinggood, who is also our county supervisor, has provided Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority with top-notch professional staffing for our agency, especially during the Upper Narrows emergency. And, you know, if ICR can no longer provide any services to VVWA, it would be extremely difficult to replace such professionalism and quality in the high desert. However, I feel that what we have before us today is a way to manipulate the situation to get around the conflict of interest laws. I am concerned that this is a possible 1090 violation. In my training in the Assembly Bill 1234, online training states that just because it's legal doesn't mean it's ethical and can still be prosecuted. The staff recommendation is vague, and this city council should be aware that we're not talking about nickels and dimes. We're talking about significant payments since the election November to ICR Staffing. And currently, VVWA has a contract coming before Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority in the May agenda for a significant amount of money. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, I'm saying that we should err on the side of caution. And to remedy this difficult situation, I propose tabling this item until we can seek an FPPC and an Attorney General's opinion to protect the city, the county, and our supervisor, as well as VVWA. And I'd like to point to an example in the city of San Bernardino where a councilman was elected by the name of DeJardins, and he had to resign because he had a contract with the city, with a towing company, with his towing company. And that was a conflict of interest, and my question is, is that how could we, and Jeff Rigney, the staff recommendation says that Jeff Rigney would be appointed to the county seat, but, and I want to say that Jeff Rigney has done an excellent job. I mean, he's over special districts of San Bernardino County, extremely knowledgeable, and he's done a great job for VVWA. But my concern is, is that Jeff Rigney works for the county of San Bernardino, so that would be, that Lovinggood would be an influence being a county supervisor. So, no matter what or who he put into place, Robert Lovinggood is the county supervisor for this area, which is over, which VVWA services. So, I don't see how, no matter who he puts in his place, that it would take away the conflict of interest. And I think that we need to err on the side of caution and just get an FPPC opinion and Attorney General's opinion before we move forward with this, so that we don't get caught up in any more trouble.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item was put on the agenda at the request of the authority. I think the issues that Councilmember Vias raised certainly caused me some concern. I think the issue is more of an authority issue than a city issue, so I would actually recommend, based on your concerns, Councilmember Vias, that the council ask the authority to research the item. Really, it would be a violation more on the authority's part than the city's part, I believe, if in fact there would be a violation.
Let me just comment on this. Since I am the city's delegate to VVWA, Mr. Cox is the alternate, and I am currently Chair of VVWA, and frankly, this came before the VVWA Board two meetings ago. I don't think the issue that Councilmember Vias has raised was discussed, I don't think it was considered. The Board approved the idea and said, please take it back to your councils and ask them all to approve it. Let me say, I supported Robert Lovinggood, and I fully intend to support him again. I'm glad we have him as a, as a, our supervisor. That's not the point. I think the issue she raises is valid. I think we need a, the authority needs to have this vetted with the DA. I think we need to get an answer on this question, so I support. I'm not sure exactly how we do that in a motion, but I think it needs to go back to VVWA with a recommendation that they consider this issue. Mr. Mayor?
I think it's a good point, raised, certainly raised issues that I hadn't thought about. Question for the attorney. Would it be appropriate to continue this and ask that you confer with the attorney of the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority to see if we join, if we ask, is it their responsibility so that, at least from legal to legal, we get it resolved quickly as possible?
Certainly, I think your options are to continue it or to table. I think Doug raises a good point. This is really an issue, Victorville has a concern over it, but it's an issue that needs to be resolved primarily by the VVWA. The concern is that the supervisor currently cannot participate on this item because he does have a direct conflict, and the question is, can somebody else be put in his place that's not going to be influenced by him and have the same type of conflict? Is there a way to eliminate the conflict? And I think it's a valid question for the city of Victorville to ask, to get the assurances that it wants, that it's not being put into a place and agreeing to something that would create a conflict of interest. So, I certainly can coordinate that, but I think that the research and the responses should come from the VVWA. We should request of them that they seek guidance from probably the Attorney General's appropriate venue, but also from the FPPC to the extent.
I agree, but who carries the message? Do we continue this, refer to the attorney, to Doug, or just continue it with the record for itself? Someone has to notify the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority.
I think what you should consider is a motion to certainly table this item and direct staff to contact VVWA and get the appropriate assurances from the VVWA.
I would also ask that we not ask for a legal opinion from the authority's attorney. This obviously didn't rise to the level of concern for him, that it has, I think we need to ask that this be resolved by the DA, or the AG.
It would be the Attorney General's Office typically, that rules on 1090 issues. They could even potentially seek a, occasionally, the AG gives verbal opinions, but I would think that the city of Victorville would like to get a written response from the AG as to whether or not there's a conflict here, and in order for you to be able to proceed.
I guess what I was trying to clarify, because I know in the past, in trying to get an opinion, it kind of hits a stone wall unless it comes from legal counsel, and yet, it wouldn't be the city of Victorville that's asking for it.
Actually, now there's a procedure where I believe you have to go to your assembly person, they have to ask the AG for the opinion.
So, if we refer it to staff, staff's going to work this out.
Correct. Staff can work it out, we can suggest that of VVWA.
I understand. Chair is open for a motion.
Motion is then to table it, refer it to staff, and follow up with VVWA.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Mr. McEckern can come back. He's getting breaks and we're not. Agenda Item Number 21, under Written Communications, the quotes from Atlas Copco, sole source brand request, presentation of a request to approve an award to Atlas Copco for the rebuild overhaul of the backup CNG station compressors. No questions? Chair is open for a vote, for a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item Number 22, Written Communications, this is a presentation of a request to approve an award to Hawker Equipment Company for the refurbish and redesign of 12001-2002 Sterling Pro Patch Truck. I read this carefully, you know, I had some concerns once you start rebuilding equipment, but when I saw the cost of, estimated cost of the new equipment, it convinced me.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item Number 24. Mr. McEckern?
Actually, Agenda Item Number 23. Apologize, but once again, I do have a client on the agenda. This item involves Cooley Construction, which has been a client of my firm, so I will stand on this item as well.
Item 23, not 24, my mistake. This is not a public hearing, but I have a card from Mr. Carlos Proano, who wishes to speak on Agenda Item Number 24, and this is 23, so we're going to get to that shortly. This is a recommendation from staff that the Honorable Body reject bids opening on March 15, 2013, for widening the south half and reconstructing the north half of Seneca Road from Borrego Road to McCart Road. Two, appropriate $21,300 from the Measure I arterial fund, number 255, and then three, award a construction contract to Cooley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $109,673.75 for the widening, for widening the south half of Seneca Road from Borrego Road to McCart.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
And now, we are on Item Number 24. I have several cards, and before I open this up for discussion, this is submitted by Mr. Doug Robertson. You have any further comments, Mr. Robertson, before I open this up to the public? Or are there any questions from members of the city council?
Just to quickly summarize, this issue's been on the agenda for several months now, on and off. Ultimately, the request by a community group to name the La Mesa and Esquali Bridge in Dr. King's honor does not meet the Caltrans guidelines that specifically state the proposed designation must reflect a community consensus without local opposition. I reviewed and re-reviewed all of the testimony given at the council meeting, all of the written testimony, as well as, we received several phone calls, voicemails on this issue. And it's clear to me that a majority of the valley, a majority of the city residents have a desire to honor Dr. King, have tremendous respect for Dr. King, but one of the questions that came up with a significant portion of the populace was, why not this person, why not that person, with various names being thrown out? So, I looked back at all of the discussion from the city council and kind of built off of a comment made by Councilmember Kennedy to look at honoring multiple civil rights leaders. The proposal that I'm suggesting to you this evening would be right here at the Civic Center. There's an educational aspect to it, where school kids would do research and submit names and essays as to civil rights leaders that they feel should be honored. Those would then be reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Committee, Community Services Advisory Committee, and ultimately, those that received approval could be sponsored by business, thereby eliminating costs for the city, which was a concern of a significant number of the residents. And ultimately, there would be a park right here near City Hall, which is the site of the Martin Luther King Day Walk every year, and it could be a gathering point or an ending point for that walk, and would have multiple civil rights leaders with a bronze likeness and also a storyboard that would explain the reasons why the school kids, and ultimately the city, determined that they should be honored in our Civil Rights Memorial Park. One thing that seemed clear to me is that we could all use a little bit more education on civil rights leaders, and it would be helpful to have that right here at City Hall so that people could come. Field trips for schools, they could come and learn in one fell swoop about a multiple leaders from not only nationally, but also locally. With that, available for any questions, comments, or further direction from the council?
Comments, questions from the council members?
Well, I think it's a great idea. I definitely want to support something that's not only educational, but fair, and it supports everyone across the board.
I second what Councilmember Angela Vias just said, and I'm in agreement.
Okay, we're going to have questions or comments from the council, then I'm going to open it up. I do have three cards from individuals who have requested to speak to the council on this item. Any other comments from the council? Mr. McEckern? Mr. Kennedy? In the order that I received these, Mr. Robert Harriman, who requested to speak on Item Number 3 and 24, followed by Mr. Charlie Glasper, followed by Mr. Carlos Proano. So, Mr. Harriman, if you would come forward, please.
Again, council, good evening.
Evening.
I was unaware of Mr. Robertson's recommendation. After reading it in the newspaper, I agree with that. I have a couple concerns. Number one, I don't think the city should fund one penny of this. It should be done by the community, and it should be an educational experience for the children here in the Victor Valley schools. We have a veterans memorial on 7th Street by the Victor Valley Junior High School, and I think that's a nice, that's definitely a nice-looking memorial. The city takes care of it nice. The city takes care of it nice. I just don't agree with having it at the City Hall. I don't think it would be appropriate to be parading kids through the City Hall. I think there's some better locations. Does the city, I'm not sure if the city owns the big sidewalk behind the buildings over here? Pardon my...
You're talking right directly behind the building between here and the county building, and it's joint ownership between the county and Victorville.
Correct. There's a large sidewalk there with an area in the, where the two sidewalks meet, that would be an excellent place for that, and it has the size for what we're looking at doing. And I would also like to add that there are many civil rights people that need to be honored, and I would like to start with some people here in the Victor Valley. I'm not familiar with his first name, but Mr. Victor had the first polling place here in the Victor Valley at his own home. So there are many candidates for this. I just would like to see that it may be made an educational experience for our kids here in the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman. Next, Mr. Glasper.
As Mr. Glasper comes up, just to clarify, the park would be exterior, it would be on the south end of the building, you're talking about an area on the north end of the building, certainly we're open to any options, but it would be something available year-round, day and night.
Thank you, Doug.
Not actually in the building.
Mayor Cox, council members and staff, this is my fourth trip up here talking about this issue, and the last council meeting we had, I thought it was a dead issue. It wasn't going anywhere. And then I get this email from City Manager Doug Robertson, and I read it, and I reread it, and I thought maybe this is the beginning of something that we all can live with. And so I stand here in support of his proposal, but he gave some examples in his proposal that Dr. King would not be there alone, he would have such noted civil rights fighters as Rosa Parks, Susan B. Anthony, Cesar Chavez, Sojourner Truth, and many others. But I thought that we could bring this a little bit closer to home, and think about some noted civil rights leaders that we have right here in this Victor Valley. Mainly, former mayor and councilperson Terry Caldwell, and his wife, Pat. Now, why do I mention their names? Well, this valley did not have a local NAACP branch. And I don't know how many of you all know, even how many people out in the audience know, that Terry Caldwell and his wife, Pat, along with Judd Piazza, and loaded Cherry, loaded Cherry, Thomas and her husband started the Victor Valley branch of the NAACP here in this Victor Valley. So I think that Dr. King would be honored to have these members of this Victor Valley in a memorial park alongside him. I don't think he was a selfish man, he didn't like to haul up a lot of notoriety, even when he got the Nobel Peace Prize, he didn't even spend the money himself. So I think that this is a starting point for this Victor Valley to unite itself behind civil rights. Civil rights is a very diverse issue, and it was handled, and it has been started to come to life by a very diverse group of people. Way back in 1908, with Mary White Overton, Mark Lewich, and that group started the NAACP at the national level. So I concur, and I thank Mr. Robertson for his efforts to bring alive what was considered to be a dead issue. And I encourage the council tonight to vote on this, so we can move forward with uniting this Victor Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glasper. And our last speaker, last card I have, Carlos Proano.
Evening, City Council. I just have a few notes here, so I don't ramble too much, but first I did want to thank the city for working with us and being so open with us, and really trying to find a way to make this work. You know, when we petitioned the City Council to open public discussion, it was just that, to open public discussion and get the different points of views. And being that we are a diverse city, you know, there was a diversity of thought, and the proposal that Mr. Robertson is putting forward is one that kind of takes those concerns and addresses everything that was, you know, all the opposition to the initial proposal. As we saw, it wasn't that people really opposed the idea of Dr. Martin Luther King himself, but that those people, they had ideas, they, well, why not this person, why not that person? Because there's so many people, they've done so much great stuff. This proposal allows that, and not only that, it allows local people, as Mr. Glasper was saying, that, you know, some people don't know. I really, really like this idea because it is more inclusive, it opens it up, it's more democratic, it's not going to be us that's doing it, it's going to be kids, it's not a third-party group that, you know, someone's going to question, it's going to be kids, and they're going to actually learn something out of this. So it encourages participation, and more importantly, it's not going to cost the city anything, because as he said, you know, it's going to be sponsors that do this, it's going to be non-taxpayer money that funds this. So I really see this as a win-win, and I see this as an opportunity to help bring people together. You know, the whole reason I supported this from the beginning is because when I thought of Dr. Martin Luther King, I thought of unity, I thought of bringing people together. Now, as we saw, you know, there was a lot of different opinions, and that kind of started becoming a little bit divisive. This brings everything back together, and I think it's what he would want, it's, I know it's what we want, and it is unity, it's bringing people together. This gives everybody an opportunity to give a voice and select who they would like. This is inclusive of all races, all ethnicities, all backgrounds, this is people that have done good stuff for Americans. When you talk about civil rights, you're talking about liberties and freedoms, that's something that we all value. So I really hope that the City Council will at least move forward with this once, and it is something that does address those initial concerns, but still does move us forward.
Thank you. That's all the cards that I have. There's no one else to speak on the item. This is a recommendation from your city manager, that the Honorable City Council support having a civil rights memorial park located at the Civic Center. That's the action at this time, you've heard the details to be worked out. I just want to make a short comment. There was, a couple of the speakers alluded that this almost became divisive, and you just can't imagine how it almost became divisive, not only for groups of people, but this whole community. And one of the things that you did not see, is this whole council working very hard behind the scenes to ensure that that didn't happen, and it didn't. So I thank this council, and particularly Doug, for coming up with an idea that I think answers all the problems and keeps everyone working together to make this community and this city the city it should be. So, thank you, Doug, and thank you of the City Council behind the scenes, a lot of calls, a lot of statements. The councilmen unanimously just refused to let this get out of hand, and I thank them for holding this together. And this is item before you for enaction, council members.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Now, Mr. Robertson, you can go to work. Oh, never mind. Item 25. Thank all of you, by the way, who participated in this, who came to the meeting, who called, who sent emails, who had a lot of meetings, who had a lot of discussions. Ladies and gentlemen, everyone involved conducted themselves, as ladies and gentlemen, and we do appreciate that. We hope we reciprocated and didn't let you down. Thank you. Item number 25. Discussion of possible actions regarding items for the upcoming City Council agenda. Start on my left?
I don't have anything.
McEckern?
Yes. Last Friday, I had to call on our Assistant City Manager to help me with the situation to get water churned on at a building, and unfortunately, as our city manager will attest to, this is not the first time that this has happened, it has happened numerous times in my tenure on the council, due to the fact that our city is closed on Fridays. Although, we have Water District employees continuing to work on Fridays, for whatever reason, we don't, we don't have the ability to get water churned on, because people can't come into City Hall and fill out the paperwork or do whatever they need to do. I would like to request, because this becomes a human safety issue when water is not available, that the council waive the requirement that this come back for us to even discuss whether or not we actually move forward with a policy to implement, but rather to have city staff come back with a policy that allows for water to be churned on on Fridays. I just don't understand, the rest of us all work, at least in the business world, Monday through Friday, unless it's a holiday, so I think that, at the very minimum, we ought to be able to turn the water on, and so I'd like to have this come back to the council as soon as possible, so that this issue does not come up again.
As a policy matter?
Yes, as a policy matter.
Okay, any other items? Agreement? Agreement, so this will be an agenda item in the future, next meeting, or whenever you get ready on the policy. Ms. Vias?
Actually, I'd like to agendize a scene about putting a shopping cart ordinance. I know that I have an abundance of shopping carts on my street, and if there is a way that we could alleviate that with the big box stores, with a requirement, I'd like to look into, have the staff maybe come back with a report of what it would require, and...
I do, I agree.
Yeah, how would that hurt the business owner? You know, I definitely wouldn't put something like that on a small business that's already struggling to keep their doors open, but a big box store, I think they can afford it.
Well, there may be some items that the council, that the staff can look at. I know that it has become a problem, and I do know that there are other cities, I'll strike that, I've been told that there are other cities that pick those up, and they deliver them for a fee, they deliver them to a central location, and the stores have to come and pick them up and pay the fee. They actually have private individuals that do it, and city staff does it, but I'm sure staff will sort through this, and if it's acceptable with the council, this will come back as a policy item.
And can, I mean, does the police, I also want to know, does the police arrest them? Because isn't that theft, if they see them pushing a cart?
Good question.
Police?
Probably not appropriate to answer it tonight, but certainly we can have that answer.
It's a good question.
Where did he go?
He heard you were going to answer the question? No, I'm sorry.
There he is.
They'll be released in about 15 minutes after.
Well, that's true.
Well, if the council agrees, staff puts this together, bring it back. Ms. Garcia?
Yes, I have seen several trucks going around picking up these carts. I don't know if they pick them up to return to where they are supposed to be returned, or if they just take them and...
Take them to Mexico or someplace else.
Take them to the recycling center.
A lot of the stores have essentially a bounty on their own carts, because it's cheaper to, you know, pay whomever brings it back a little bit of money, rather than buying a new cart. So there are services that drive around in flatbed trucks, obviously, they aren't going to the wash, based on Mr. Harriman's comments there. So we'll certainly take a look at those and see what's out there now, and see if there's some way for us to improve it, without being, you know, putting in an ordinance that would be detrimental to business, obviously.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing, I had the opportunity last week to talk to Michelle Scray Brown, who, if you don't know that name, she is the head of the probation department for San Bernardino County. Her mother is a lady who cuts my hair, and I recommend her, but I met Michelle in the shop, she had the appointment right, so we talked for 20 minutes. She had some very positive things to say about the county's results on AB 109, and what the probation department has in place in the way of programs and responses, and some of the success stories they've had dealing with the probationers. And I asked her if she would be interested in coming to the council and speaking to us, and she said either she would do it, or the public information officer she has in her department. But she said there's a lot of misconception, there's a lot of misunderstanding about what the probation department is actually doing, about the nature of the problem, and I thought that would be something we could arrange for. She said she'd be happy to come herself, or send her PIO.
Councilmembers, we have consensus. City clerk, you can contact the individual. That's all we have, I have no items at this time. Agenda item number 26, presentation of reports by staff and council members, we'll start on the right. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I had the chance yesterday to attend the R-Cubed tour, put on by MWA. The, why do they call it Cubed? I don't know, it's R three times, Regional Recharge and Recovery Project. And what MWA is doing, for those of you who haven't, aren't familiar with the program, they're putting water into the Mojave River, and have placed five wells near the river, and are going to store water in the basin, and then retrieve it and sell it to Hesperia and Victorville. There is one well on the east side of the river that will ultimately supply Apple Valley, and Victorville will have two turnouts from the main line that comes from the river across the valley. One will be all the way at the end, and will allow us to interconnect with Adelanto and supply Adelanto with water through that project. Victorville will be able to supply in Hesperia. So all the communities are going to benefit from this project, and there will be a sustainable, predictable water supply well into the future. It's not cheap, they've spent $54 million. Seven years ago, when Larry and Jim and Kathy, well Kathy wasn't on the board then, but when we were all on the board, the Water District, this was a dream, it was on drawing boards. Today, it's built. They have spent the money, that line runs across Lemon, all the way across Hesperia, all the pumps are in place, all the storage facilities are in place, they're ready to start delivering water, so they've done a tremendous job on this, and it's been a tremendous effort of all the communities. And Victorville should be proud to be the first that's going to start buying water in a short time.
Probably a couple of weeks.
Wonderful project.
Councilmember Vias?
None at this time.
Councilmember McEckern?
Did you forget me, Mayor Cox?
Yes. Doug has nothing to say. No, I'm sorry.
I have two items, I know how much you love my reports at the end of council meetings...
You say the best for last, so go right ahead.
Well, you're yet to go, sir. First off, I'd like to congratulate the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce on their 100th anniversary, which is this Friday. They are celebrating with a cocktail party, if you're interested in that, contact the chamber office. And also, I have very, very good news, that is hopefully leading to even better news. Yesterday, I received an email that had the final staff recommendation from the California Energy Commission, and the staff of the commission is recommending the extension of the Victorville two permit for five years, which was our request. Very proud of the staff that did the work to supply that information to the commission. Ultimately, that started a 30-day window for comments, and ultimately, this will be on the business meeting in Sacramento on June 12th, and Janelle Davidson and myself will fly up there for that, and speak in favor of the project, answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and hopefully come back with a final decision for the extension of the permit. I would like to thank the cities of Adelanto, the town of Apple Valley, and I don't quite know yet, but I know Hesperia was considering a resolution of support on their meeting agenda tonight, and hopefully they provide that, and we'll forward that on to the CEC. They actually cited the resolutions of support in the recommendation. The recommendation is, it was very short, it's only about three pages long, but one of the paragraphs was dedicated to the fact that Adelanto and Apple Valley had supported the project.
Thank you very much. Thank you for participating in this meeting, and that concludes our business for tonight. Thank you, and have a good evening.